I heard a pin drop.
This can't be church because everybody's in the front row.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ready? Okay. Good evening, like to welcome everybody to the April 26th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Christie, grab your call, please.
Beerstead.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Uh, next we'll have approval of minutes from the April 12th regular meeting.
I move approval, second.
First and second on minutes, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to approval of the bills with Mr. Beerstead.
Mayor and council, I move to approve payment of bills in the amount of $1,863,167.77, subject to the Comptroller's Review.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments on the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is public comments. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to stand up and say something, now would be the time.
Good evening. My name is Patricia LaRue. I live at 489 Marcella Court in River Falls. I am the Chair to the City of River Falls Park and Recreation Board. We refer to the Park Board. I have come tonight to comment on the discussion of a future ice skating rink to be built in one of the city's parks. This subject started as a discussion at the City Council Meeting in April, on April 12th. The discussion had to do with dedicating funds from the American Rescue Plan Act to building an ice skating rink. After being introduced, there was much, much conversation that the creation of an ice skating rink should come through and first be considered by the Park Board. The motion to fund the skating rink passed through the council. The monthly planned Park Board Meeting happened the next week. The ice skating rink was on our agenda. Mr. Simpson graciously attended our meeting and was very helpful explaining the ARPA funds to the board. And Mr. Downing, Alderman Downey, also appeared at the board to help understand the creation of the ice skating rink. I believe that both Mr. Simpson and Mr. Downing will attest that there was a thorough, thoughtful, and deliberate discussion by the Park Board. When all questions were asked and answered, we took a vote. We unanimously approved of ARPA funds being dedicated for an ice skating rink. A comment was made to the effect that an ice skating rink was part of the city's 2015 master plan for the Glen Park. And the fact that the park had removed it from the plan indicated that the board must not have considered it a priority. But some background may be helpful, and I'll speed it up here. Uh, the Park Board began the master plan for Hoffman and Glen Parks in 2012. By 2015, the, the plan was ready for the public. It met with great approval. At the time the plan, the board had budgeted $600,000 for a park shelter with bathrooms in Glen Park. However, FEMA came in with a grant several times that. In order to accept the grant, we must construct a storm shelter. The Park Board considered keeping with the budget it had and just having a, a, the picnic shelter. However, the City Council approved, accepting the FEMA grant with the increased cost of building a storm shelter, requiring a basement, solid concrete walls, and a roof that could withstand a tornado. One of the council members indicated that if the, the shelter saved one life, it would be worth it, fair enough. The board then was sent back, the Park Board was then had to determine, we had to cut our budget because we had to pay for the part, the shelter now. We seriously considered not investing in, in the parking lot and roadway and just repaving it. However, City Engineer Reed Ronsky advised the board that the city funds were best spent in the infrastructure of the park, totally redoing the parking spaces, the turnaround for the buses, and to let the children off by the park. We were told things like the sports court, the ice skating rink, and playground equipment are features private individuals or community groups would adopt and fund in the future. With that advice, the board spent their funds on the storm shelter and the roadways in the parking area, and then we threw in the splash pad. So it wasn't that the ice skating rink wasn't a priority, it, or that it wasn't important. We were just told that some project, some group, would come in and put in a skating rink. We're now five years later and with no skating rink. I would also like to remind the City Council that one of the overarching goals of the Kenny Corridor Plan was to make River Falls a four-season destination. A quality skating rink could help move toward that goal. Although the master plan had the rink in Glen Park, De Sanctus Park, and Hoffman Park would also be contenders. The Park Board will obviously respect the City Council's decision on this. But please know, funding an ice skating rink was unanimously approved by the Park Board. And after all, aren't we the home of Olympic gold medal winner and U.S. Hockey Hall of Famer, Karen By. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaRue. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Mr. Mayor, I have a public comment if I could.
Go ahead.
The citizens of River Falls look to this council to implement deliberate and vetted fiscal policy. We do this by prioritizing the needs of the city when possible, the wants. Council members are aware of the budgeting process and how it then flows to the work plan and fiscal plan. As a council, we drive the items on the work plan by asking questions, understanding, and debating the projects presented to us by fellow council members and staff. Once agreed upon, the staff then creates a work plan to implement these items that the council then agrees to, and they take priority. Since 2012, I have been advocating for a redo of River Walk. The River Walk has not attained a high enough priority on the work plan to be included on the list. When the Glen Park Plan was accepted, I added to my list of work plan priorities, both a skating rink and a warming shelter on the east side of the park. I even approached my local Rotary Group that I'm a member of and asked them to look at it, and they considered it seriously, but didn't, didn't take it up unfortunately. I continue to raise both River Walk and Ice, the, the Ice Arena or the Ice Skating Rink during council workshops, and will continue to do so in the future. While I'm disappointed that these projects have not yet made the final list, I understand that this, that they are in, in some respect, wants and not needs. In the case of River Walk, it's part of a larger plan. The process can be slow and frustrating, but it allows the policy-setting body, this council, to be very deliberate. I believe that it is important to provide staff with clear direction on how and when to proceed. This helps to ensure that the planning, engineering, budgeting, bidding, is done in an effective manner that ultimately benefits the taxpayers. I have said in the past and will say it again, a pot of money in search of a project is poor fiscal policy. My plea to my fellow council members is to be deliberate when making fiscal policy decisions. I believe we owe it to the citizens to be judicious with their tax dollars. We have embarked on a large project for the city in the comprehensive park and bike ped plans. It is my hope, and I believe the hope of all the council, that the citizens of River Falls engage in the construction of these plans. Once completed, this will help the council to set priorities for streets, roads, bikes, pedestrian connections, and I hope, ice rinks, warming houses, and River Walk. I look forward to working with all the council members during this process, and I thank you for listening to my thoughts tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You?
Mr. Mayor, I have a public comment. And, uh, I would hope that we keep our comments regarding to agenda items for later next time. Um, but I'm going to talk about something that is a public comment right now. Uh, despite the very windy weather we had, Earth Fest was a huge success. I want to thank everyone who made it possible and contributed to making it happen. I thank our mayor, our city council, for their commitment to sustainability, and our community partners. I also want to thank everyone who stopped by my table, River Falls B-City and Clean Water Advocates, that showed their support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any public comments?
One more, Dean.
Yep.
Um, this really isn't anything to do with the city, but I just want to make sure all of us, um, um, take an opportunity to make sure that we hold the ones that we love close. I'm deeply saddened and, um, heartbroken with the events that happened in Chippewa Falls this last week. And, um, I hope that we realize that this can happen anywhere, whether it's Chippewa Falls, River Falls, and that. And let's be guarded of what can happen and, and, and continue to love the ones we love. So, that's it, Dean.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Now I'll move on. I just want to take a quick minute to recognize, uh, we have, um, some new council, well, we have one new council member, Mr. Bjork, I'd like to welcome him. And then Mr. Beerstead and Mr. Morissette were both re-elected, so this is our first meeting with our new council. Just want to recognize them. Uh, next, I'd like to, uh, recognize our fire chief for his retirement. And I have a little presentation for him, if Scott would like to come up front, I can read it to him. Okay. So this is the proclamation honoring Fire Chief Scott Nelson. Whereas Chief Nelson began his fire service career with the Mankato Department of Public Safety as a paid on-call volunteer in 1988, and subsequently served 22 years in career positions for Mankato, the city of Red Wing, and the city of Lakeville, Minnesota, prior to coming to Minnesota, or, prior to coming to River Falls. And whereas Chief Nelson began his services to the city of River Falls as the first ever career fire chief in 2011. And during his tenure, he helped mentor many members, lead a reorganization of the department, and oversaw the development of new policies and programs while serving selflessly in accordance with the city's values. And whereas, on behalf of the city council, I want to express our sincere appreciation to Chief Nelson for his service to the city of River Falls, and wish him much happiness as he entered his well-deserved retirement. Now therefore, I, Dan Tollin, Mayor of the city of River Falls, in recognition of Chief Nelson's service, bestow upon him the honorary title of Fire Chief, I'm, I'm going to say this word wrong, Emeritus.
Yep.
That worked.
For the city of River Falls, and call upon the citizens of River Falls to extend their highest commendation and appreciation to Scott Nelson. Given under my hand and seal the city of River Falls is 26th day of April, 2022. Got it? Thanks.
Wow, I feel like a professor. Um, thank you, Mayor, Council. Just got a few things to say, and, and I, I really didn't know how to do this as far as to thank everybody. But, uh, I wrote down some thoughts. Sometimes I view myself as a conductor of an orchestra consisting of you, the council, the Police and Fire Commission, Scott Simpson, City Administrator, Jason Stroud and Julie Bergstrom, current and former Assistant City Administrators, city staff, our community members, we can't forget them, and all the members of the Fire Department, whose dedication and commitment continue to amaze me. With that, I want to just make a, a special acknowledgement to my division chiefs, Tom Foley, Mike Moody, and Ed Black. Whose leadership and support helped me keep the orchestra playing. Also to Justin Wilson, who helped guide the chief's advisory committee and the department as we transitioned to a new organizational structure. Finally, and most, the, the most important member of my orchestra, my wife Stacy. Simply put, I couldn't have done this without her support. Had any part of that orchestra been out of tune for any length of time, I would not be standing here eleven and a half years after being hired. I allot to my orchestra. I fully expect the band to be in tune under interim chief Tom Foley's direction as you work to have your next full-time chief in place. The department is truly in good hands. Thanks for a great run. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Okay. Next we'll go on to the consent agenda, starting with the acknowledgement of the following minutes. This will be the River Falls Housing Authority from 3/9/22, Plant Commission from 3/1/22, Historic Preservation Commission from 3/9/22, the Library Board from 3/7/22, Utility Advisory Board from 2/21/22, the Park and Rec Advisory Board from 3/16/22, the West Central Wisconsin Biosolids Facility from 2/17 and 3/24 of 22, and the Bike and Pedestrian Steering Committee from 4/6 of 22, and the Police and Fire Commission from 3/1 of 22. Next thing is a resolution approving the general development plan for South Point. And this is the first, um, reading. Uh, it'll be, it'll, the develop, uh, sorry. This is the first edition, for the first edition at South Point, sorry. Uh, the next one is a resolution awarding bid for North Tower Water Construction, North, North Water Tower. Wow, construction. Uh, this resolution would award the contractor for construction of the North Water Tower to Phoenix Fabricators and Erectors LLC. Does anybody want to poll anything?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, first and second on the consent agenda, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to the Comptroller's Report.
Uh, the Comptroller's Report for March 2022. General Fund revenues through the end of March were $3,841,271, or 33% of total budgeted revenues for the year. Revenues in March included $75,224 from recreational program revenue, $8,281 in building permit fees, and $22,686 in personal property tax collections. Year-to-date expenditures through the end of March were $2,450,378, or 21% of total budgeted expenditures for the year. As of March 31st, 2022, revenues in excess of expenditures were $1,390,893.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, next we move on to unfinished business. Um, on April 14th, 2022, I invoke my veto power as per State Statute 69.098C. I object for the following reasons. I don't wish for staff to be distracted from current priorities and important projects by adding a $100,000 ice rink project to the list. I also am not in favor of adding a wage study or transportation utility feasibility to the work plan for 2022. We have an established, thoughtful, and proven process of identifying community priorities and getting them implemented. The ice rink project is not on the current priority list. $100,000 can be better spent on items previously identified as current priorities. In fact, I prefer that money, that amount of money to be used toward ash tree replacement. $100,000 does not match either the $700,000 estimate for a warming house or outdoor rink from 2017, or the more recent 2022 $50,000 estimate for a basic outdoor rink. I would really like to wait for the completion of the comprehensive plan, which the city is spending over a quarter million dollars on for just these sorts of things. The planning process, the comprehensive planning process is a perfect plot, place for something like this to occur. Um, that way you can see if the ice rink remains a priority for the community among the many desired park and recreation investments that may be identified in the outdoor recreation plan. My ejection does not reflect any concerns about eventually constructing an outdoor ice rink. Since election, I have been an advocate for the city's parks. In particular, I was a driving force in prioritizing the master plans for Hoffman and Glen Park, and the investment in a significant refresh at Glen Park and the Glen Park Pool. I am in favor of eventually adding a sports court ice rink, a warming house, and large, uh, central playground in Glen Park as called for in the master plan. These projects were discussed and identified as future phases. I am in favor of utilizing the ARPA funding primarily for previously identified near-term shovel-ready projects. The scope of the ice rink project, as included in the, in the amendment, is not well-defined or thought out, and was not a near-term priority identified by the community. It is not ready to be implemented, given the current workload and priorities of the city. I hope the city council will uphold my veto and then consider adopting a resolution nearer the draft presented originally.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Um, I'm going to thank you and Councilmember Morissette for your, uh, counsel and discussion on this. First, and I appreciate your support for an ice rink, whether it's now or in the future. That means a lot to our community. Um, but I also want to talk about, um, an alternative that we did not get a chance to look at because we unfortunately did not have the opportunity with our limited discussions and workshop.
Mayor, I have to draw a point of order here. I think we need some sort of a motion or something before we start discussion. Yep.
Is that why you had discussion earlier?
We need, I need, I need, I need a, a motion or something on this to get into discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. So no motion from anyone, so move on.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Need a motion to uphold the, the veto, or what do we?
If they want to act on it, they have to have a motion, otherwise it's upheld.
Okay, I see.
So nobody's acting on it?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to, uh, discuss this.
Are you making a motion to discuss what? You make, yeah, I need a motion on the veto.
Mr. Mayor, I make, I make a motion that we move approval for communication of mayor veto regarding resolution of approving ARPA spending plan discussion and possibility of common council override of veto.
You uphold, you're moving to veto the veto, or?
Override.
Override the veto.
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got first and second. Discussion, comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to make a, I want to be very fair about it.
Yep. Do I, I can just go on to discussion on this, right? Okay, sorry.
Um, like I said, I'd like to first thank the council, and, um, I don't think we'd be even having this discussion if we didn't have the ARPA funds. So, it's not, I understand that it was kind of dropped on the council, and I respect people's differences. I think very highly of what we do as a group. Um, but ma, Mr. Mayor and Council, tonight I'm asking for your help to move our community forwards like the ARPA funding suggests. It provides an option to save money in the long run as we go about getting grants using, save, what I call save-as-you-go spending, where the current long-term plan would not, since it relies more heavily on taxes and not acquiring community block grants or ARPA. ARPA gives us an opportunity for something to build off from and save money while accomplishing priorities our community is asking for. For me, there are no hard feelings towards other council members or mayor on this, regardless of what your perspective is. We are in a unique position to better our city with ARPA spending for an ice rink, which, to be fair, is unexpected. ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, spending includes spending on community projects that are long overdue. I did not expect to get a majority of support in our last meeting, but I was happy to see that the majority of our, our community's elected officials could see this materializing in importance of passing the $100,000 for a community ice rink, which would include proper lighting and a smaller heated benches facility, would, which would not, not happen in the immediate, otherwise. Uh, please do not veto this, Mr. Mayor. In our last meeting, our council discovered that $100,000 was more than enough to pay for a rink. That means it, it was estimated at 50,000 to 60,000 for a high-quality rink. And the rest of that money, I mean, can go to heated benches facility, which is smaller and a functional way, with a warming area and a lighting which would also be needed. This was not common knowledge at the time when we had discussed it. This is why you should change your minds. It's very practical and reasonable to see how this would work now. But I do understand I'm putting you on the spot, and I apologize for that. Because unfortunately, we didn't have the meeting that, uh, or time to really discuss ARPA in its full. I'll put that into perspective when thinking about what our community wants. Oftentimes, basics such as a community ice rink are overlooked and have been overlooked. I'm not asking for the full $750,000 amount for an expensive warming house. We know we can do these projects for $100,000, and we got the starting amount correct, which would give our community something. And having an ice rink with basic amenities is better than not having an ice rink at all. Most people would be supportive of getting an ice rink for $100,000 with the proper amenities, that heated benches or a smaller facility of that, for lighting, which, and lighting which council, the council responsibly passed and supported for $100,000. Mr. Mayor, our community needs one. A bigger expensive warming house can come later, or when we get a grant funding, community block grants, and, uh, bank sponsorships, and other recruitment partners available for it. Because it's a cost intensity, a warming house hurts basic, just getting a basic project done in the more immediate. But something right now is better than nothing. I respect the fact that our mayor did not agree with it at the time, and I know I put him and all of you on the spot. But we simply did not have the ability to have a long conversation about it. We had one workshop, and our mayor was not able to attend. He had a prior obligation, which I also respect. We all do a lot of work for the council, which means we're oftentimes very busy. Our workshop, to be fair, was maxed out in time and bumped against the council meeting. I'm hoping he may change his mind and your mind tonight with this new information. Think what we can all agree on, the funding of this project is unique. We should consider ourselves lucky to have ARPA funding for community projects that have not gotten the proper attention. That would be something our community can enjoy while saving money by spending it in a more sensible way, so we can have an ice rink. If we did a project now, theoretically, if Simpson was to take, our administrator, Scott Simpson, was to take a, uh, one of the least proper, one of the least priorities of the cities off the priority list, we could actually save money while getting an ice rink and meeting some basic community needs that have been neglected for 10 years, instead of waiting for another, uh, five or eight. What we are discussing today is having an ice rink versus not having an ice rink for another five to eight years. It also has already been 10 years of not having a community ice rink. It would be good to bring our community together, even though we are still suffering effects of the pandemic. The project that would come off the list would be the least important, and the ice rink would take its place. The Park Board has now prioritized the ice rink and wants the ARPA funding the council passed for it to make it a reality. The $100,000 from ARPA would be well-spent. We know that this would be replacing an item that is the lowest on our priority list to be able to do this that matches time constraints. That is why having our city administrator pick the item is logical, because it is, it is more about time doing the project than it is about money. For those who are wondering, the amount of money to do this is $100,000. For the ice rink, lighting, and a smaller heated benches facility, the warming house is, which is too expensive, can come later, which savings from community block grants and community partners such as banks and other groups. This would also allow us to save money by taking something that could be cost and, and time-intensive away from the priority list. I'm asking for your generosity for our community. This is a very small amount of ARPA money I'm asking for our community. I know I put you on the spot. I did so because the reality is, it will not materialize anytime soon without your support. Our workshop did not have time for the broader discussions because of lack of time. What I am asking for is a priority over something that is popular, that we can do later. What I am asking for costs less than a house in the city, in our city. This is not a question of money, it's a question of priority. I have been, had the privilege of being on the Park Board for the last two terms, and I thank our mayor for that privilege. I know the importance of an ice rink to our community. This has already been 10 years waiting, another five plus, whatever it takes to get the grants, is a very long time. For $100,000 amount, we could have something instead of nothing for our community, and responsibly go after the funding sources, we could, we would be absolutely get more for the expensive warming house later on. And if, if we say we're not open to funding, alternative funding sources like ARPA, should we also apply that to other long-term projects we're, we're currently going to be looking at? I would hope there's not a double standard going on here in the future. Asking for the full amount upfront is why the project has never happened. When I asked our Park Board Director, I was told that they are essentially waiting for money to come in with their hands out for this project, and that their, their hands have been out to collect money for it responsibly. To put it into perspective, I am asking less than what it costs for playground equipment for Glen Park or a house. Of course, playground equipment is not cheap. Playground equipment is a top priority as well as an ice rink, and our city administrator has reassured the Park Board that playground equipment would not come off the list, because that is also a top priority, and which would go forward in a smaller project, the bottom of the list would come off, as, which wouldn't be as popular, like I said before, if you were to go forwards tonight. We know the council passed $100,000 for an ice rink. The rink itself would cost $50,000 to $60,000. We also know that $100,000 we passed would cover lighting in this much smaller heated benches facility that could be used later on for multipurposes for the city. So we know that, that we have an ice rink today, or relatively soon, we know it's been 10 years. I thank everyone for trying to help move the needle forward, whether you support what I'm asking for or not. We know it's a top priority of the Park Board now, and our community supports this kind of saving, save-as-you-go spending. I save-as-you-go because we know that over time, more expenses of amenities such as a warming house could be brought in through community block grants, community grants, naming rights, which could be paid from banks and other ARPA sources, such as Pierce County potentially, banks that might want naming rights. The reality is, we already passed the ice rink. Have something for our community that works is better than not having anything at all. We already know that we have, would be adding another five years to the time we have waited, plus time for grants. So if we don't use ARPA funding, we are most likely looking at another eight years total of not having an ice rink for our community. If we go forward, we know the community block grants and other sources I have mentioned save money over time. And sooner we get in line, the higher chance we would actually have the expense of paying for an expensive warming house in the actually projected time that was originally there, and be saving money doing so. We have a fair shot at getting them because they are meant for public. We have a fair shot at getting them because they are meant for public projects such as this. Whether you agree or disagree, I hope you would look kindly at an ice rink and this unique opportunity to provide for our community where we won't have one in the present otherwise, and vote in favor of what our park board and members of our community is asking us to do now. Mr. Simpson, I have one question for you. Could you clarify what a vote would be for and against as far as the veto goes?
So I understand that you had a motion to override the veto. So a vote yes would be to go back to what was passed by the council on the four-three vote, which my, my understanding of that is the 100,000 to be identified for an ice rink, and then the city administrator was, was to identify where that 100,000 would come from out of the other priorities that were identified at the workshop. A no vote would be to sustain the mayor's veto, and then that would eliminate what had been passed, and you'd be, we need to do it over again. You know, the staff would bring you something then to, to vote on.
So to be clear, a yes vote would say we want an ice rink that's responsibly brought in now as I described, correct?
Responsibly is up to the council to determine whether you think it's responsible or not, but the vote would be to identify 100,000 for an ice rink, yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
Okay, other, yep, go ahead, man.
Thank you for your thoughts, Sean. I've, they inspired a few in me. While we may not have had a lot of time at our ARPA workshop, we have, we as a council with staff and in committees have had plenty, have generally plenty of time to debate projects. We have our annual, actual more bi-annual budgeting program. We have a five-year fiscal plan. We have our CIP, capital improvement plan. We spend significant time talking about our various priorities in the city. So all those were opportunities to discuss what park priorities are, and it hasn't risen to the surface in any, any of those meetings. But those meetings have provided some time for us to talk about, about park projects and what's a priority. I am very much in favor of an ice rink. I am very much in favor of actually the original plan for Glen Park, which was not just an ice rink, but it was a multi-use sports kind of field that would be used for basketball during the summer, meant to be flooded, and with a lovely warming house with bathrooms. And the total expense was, I don't know, at least half a million dollars, 700,000 dollars. It was, it was significant, but it would be a significant benefit. I think we can get that. And I think in some ways we can get that as fast as if we, as if we set aside 100,000 for it now. We are currently going through the comprehensive plan process, which will give the community and the park board plenty of opportunity to get information from interested citizens about what, what park priorities are. And that's ongoing, and we'll probably, I can't remember when, we're supposed to have a report within the year, I think, of, of what our priorities are. I can't imagine getting the bids and everything for the ice rink should, should the mayor's veto be overridden. I can't imagine getting that finished any faster. So I, 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 I trust our process. I think that we do our best work when we get most information. And that includes more information for, more opportunities for citizens to give us information, more information from staff and the park board, more bids that are in front of us before we vote on it rather than backfilling it after. So I really want an ice rink too, but I, I think we make our best decisions and get the best results when we trust the process that has served us well in this council.
Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I got a comment. My, my, my comments during, during public comment were more of a plea for, for the fiscal process to my fellow council members. With regard to this particular item, as I've said, I, I've been a big supporter of the ice arena. I had hoped to, to get it done with a public, with some public support from a service club in town. And in fact, I jokingly teased the mayor every time we went into one of those that the ice arena was going to make it on, and it never did. I also feel strongly about Riverwalk, and I, and I suppose I could have done the same thing with, with Riverwalk and, and launched into carving out 200 or 300,000 for Riverwalk, but I respect that fiscal policy and that, and that process that we use. I respectfully disagree with your timeframe, Mr. Downing. I don't think this is another eight years out. I think we get through the, the comprehensive plans, and if we, if we rally the people, and I'll be the first one to put my name on the top of the list for an ice rink in the, in the park plan, I think that will, that will float to the top. We've, we've structured the ARPA items such that it would allow for a great amount of bonding, fiscal bonding that, or fiscal, not necessarily bonding, but there's capacity in our fiscal budget to fund some of these things after we've had well-thought-out planning, budgeting, bidding and engineering. And so again, I ask us to think about the process, and I know that this is one way to try to rise, raise this issue to the top. And whether or not this, the veto is sustained or overridden, I hope that the public comes out, goes to the public listening sessions for the park plan and the comp plan and the bike and, and pedestrian plans, and engages and tells us that that's a priority. It's been a priority for me, just like Riverwalk has. But that's not the, this is not the right way to do it. That's, that's where I'm at. So thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
I'd like to go, Mr. Mayor, if I can. So first, I want to thank all the council members for a kind and gracious discussion. I believe this council seeks to disagree without being disagreeable, and this is a pretty important virtue to model. In fact, I think Madison and Washington could learn something from us on that. This feels a bit like maybe in relationships or marriage, where we agree on the goal, but sometimes not how we get to those goals. The mayor does have a right to assert the veto. It's important for the community and council to know that this is a beldo that's pretty rarely run. At most in the last 20 years, we've had six vetoes by the mayor. I understand that the perspective here that's been articulated very well, that the process, I can't be trumped over or ignored, ignored, and I don't disagree. But it is possible that we have a council, in a broader sense, sometimes let progress stifle, or let progress be stifled by process. It has been noted, we have prior plans for a skating rink. More or less, those plans are null and void. We do have the support of the park and rec board. In advance this meeting, I wanted to bring some fresh information to everyone. I surveyed over 73 municipalities that are between the sizes of 10,000 and 26,000 in the state of Wisconsin. The Wisconsin Blue Book was my source for that. Around 50% have a rink of some sort. Most were outdoor, many were simple, often it was just an open area that was flooded to create to skate. Really nothing more complex than that. Many had a warming shelter, some did not, some were occupied, many were left open. A handful had lighting provided until 9:00 PM, some of them didn't. So one goal from this discussion, knowing that the votes to, to override the veto probably aren't there, is just maybe we need to think about what we want from a rink. Does it need to be a four, five, six, 700,000 dollar project? It isn't for a lot of the communities in the state, a lot of really good communities in our state. So why do we necessarily want to do something different? So I hope that we can all agree, based on this discussion, and I respect everyone's opinion here, that our goal is to get to where people can skate safely and for a low expense, and hopefully support a longer-term four-season vision for our parks. As the complexity and scope of that project increases, naturally the project's completion date and cost does become harder. But I do think it's important to say this is not going to the moon in terms of the idea of putting some water out, having it freeze and then skating. A lot of other communities do do that. ARPA money was not designed to the federal government just as a backfill for all the priorities, which have been very skillfully laid out by, by Mr. Simpson and staff. It was also meant to put projects out into the public that could be seen, touched and enjoyed. I'm thankful for how the 1.6 has been allocated and thankful in general for the good stewardship of the city on behalf of the citizens. Looking around, I know we probably don't have the votes, and that's okay. But hopefully this discussion as a council and a community, we can create fresh ideas to solve this and move forward. We have great planners, engineers, administrators and professionals all dedicated to our future. But we don't always know the future, and sometimes these plans do drag on. So let's do our best to keep energy moving towards this in whatever fashion we can. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
Mayor, I'd like to speak if you can hear me.
Yep.
Okay. I have concerns about this veto for two reasons. First, I am concerned that we vetoed the pay equity study. I think that that is a necessary tool that governments and employers can use to make sure that we are paying our employees equitably so that women and people of color and other marginalized groups are making this, you know, relatively same amount of money as their counterparts. And so I think it's a really important thing for us to know as a council that our city is leading the way in equitable pay to all our employees. And that also leads me into the, my point about the ice rink. We are proud first-year parents of, of a River Falls Youth Hockey Association player, and that is not cheap. It is very expensive. Even though she was, did the Learn to Skate program and it was the beginning, hockey is an expensive sport. Ice skating is an expensive sport. There is nowhere in River Falls that you can play hockey, ice skate for free. You have to pay at the university, and you would have to be a member of the River Falls Youth Hockey Association in order to use the outside and indoor rink over at the Wildcat Center, which is perfectly fine. It is their building, but it does cost money. And so when we don't have winter activities for families to do that are free from the city, it creates an undue financial hardship on families who want to have their children skate or do other winter activities. And so I think it's really important, and again, like Nick has said, I don't think we have the votes to override the veto, but I do think it's something that we need to put at the forefront of our planning. I, I really don't want to see this take a really long time to do. I know that all of the feedback I have gotten about two weeks ago, the vote has been extremely positive. People are very excited that there was a possibility of an ice rink. So I think people will be a little bit disappointed to see that this got overwritten. But that's what I wanted to say, and I appreciate everyone's perspectives. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reply to that comment. So Alyssa, I have to thank you for bringing up a point. When you talked about the, the idea of vetoing workers and figuring out what's fair pay. You know, to me, it makes a lot of sense to have fair pay. It's not too much, it's not too little. It's really important to make sure we retain quality staff and the ones that have made our city successful. And it's also important to value the cost savings that come with the transportation utility fee, both of which our city administrator and city staff support doing. So I can tell you it'd be a mistake to not vote yes on this. A vote yes gets fair pay for our city staff. A vote yes gets us cost savings for our transportation utility, and in doing so, gets us a cost-affordable ice rink while replacing something that's not as important on our priority list. I appreciate everybody's thoughtful comments, wisdom that they have shared, regardless if they agree with me or not. I know that they're being honest, and they're looking forward to stewards as well for the city. I appreciate the kind and good discussion we've had tonight. So thank you, Mayor and Council.
Anybody else?
Just one quick, quick comment. Should the mayor's veto be sustained, the, how to spend the ARPA fund, this is going to come up before us in May. So we'll be able to have additional discussion, maybe get more additional information, but I just wanted to, and I too am very committed to being a good employer and fair pay for employees. So I, I see that as something that will be passed, if not tonight eventually. So, thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
I just, I like what Nick said about the, the whole marriage thing. I, I think he's right. I think we all want the same thing. We all want an ice skating rink. We want something like that for our community. We just have different ways of going about it. I think we have to remember that the way we do things here, the way we go through these processes and that, it gives us the ability to get twice as much done as any other city around here in one year. Takes them two years to get what we get done in a year because of our processes. And then council has to remember that and trust in the process, the way we do things. That's why the city is ran so well. Next, the only thing I wanted to say about the wages, as far as wage studies goes, we do wage studies. I'm not, I'm not saying we should never do wage studies. We do them. We just did one two years ago. We, that, that, we talk about that all the time about, I want people to understand that we, we, we understand the concept of paying our wage, paying wage, fair wages and that. That's why we are constantly updating our wage scales and everything, and making sure we keep the quality workers that we have. You know, I, I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't have a wage study. We do them every three to four years, right, now, the way it is?
Yeah, and the item that was in the original resolution that was passed, keeping in mind that I have to find 100,000 of replacement, which could include the wage study and the transportation utility feasibility. So a, a yes vote to override the mayor's veto doesn't necessarily mean the wage study or the transportation utility study will be completed, because we still have to take a look at our estimates on some of the playground equipment and other things, try to determine how we get that. So it, just, and then the compensation study is, was, in our internal planning is for '23. We were using ARPA money to move it up so that we could try to use it for the next two-year budget. Whereas if we don't, we'd potentially just, we'd still be doing the study, but we might do it in '24 for the next two-year budget cycle. So I don't, I'm not telling you not to give that weight as a council. I'm just cautioning you that a yes vote doesn't mean that those two things get done, because that's not how the original resolution was, was ordered. But I certainly am listening to what the council's telling me is priority, and this is a good spot for you to do that as a group rather than individually. So I appreciate that.
Can I make a quick comment? Mayor, I don't want to interrupt you if you're in the middle of something. This is a piece where language really matters. I'm, I'm trying to understand this. As I understand it, what it was in the ARPA funding is pay equity. Pay equity is different than a wage study. A wage study would be something where we're looking at, are we keeping up with other like-sized municipality in terms of wage and benefits? A pay equity study looks at how are we paying people who are marginalized in society in the workplace? So women, people of color, LGBTQ, people with disabilities, folks like that versus their male counterparts. Pay equity studies are not necessarily looking at the difference between whether we are keeping up with Hudson or in terms of how we're doing pay and benefits for certain positions. And so I think it's really important to make sure that we're clear about what pay equity is.
Yeah, for clarification, what was included in the resolution, at least staff's understanding, was a traditional compensation study, not a pay equity study. There's elements now, in all compensation studies, they typically include equity within the structure. You know, the structure itself is intended to do that, but this is not a specific study on gender, race, or any other protected class equity. It's, it was a traditional internal and external equity compensation study. So looking at our compensation strategy and setting pay ranges and things. So just to clarify, that was, that was my understanding. I don't, I don't recall us discussing equity as a specific topic at the workshop, and that wasn't our intention to. This doesn't mean that's not something we'll have a goal to do, but that wasn't what I understood. What we budgeted for won't cover, won't cover what you're talking about. What we budgeted for was a survey of, you know, you survey about 30 to 40 positions across different organizations and do position PAQs and things within the organization to make sure that we're paying mechanics fairly with linemen and that kind of thing, if that makes sense to the council. So pay equity is a study that we can do, but that's not what was anticipated in the resolution.
When is the last time we did a pay equity study?
I'm sorry, Alyssa, what?
Oh, when was the last time we did a pay equity study?
I don't believe the study that you're discussing has been completed by us. Not, not my time here. Again, there's elements of it within our compensation, our, our current structure, there's elements of it that we're taking into. there's elements of it that we're taking into consideration specifically probably two or three studies ago. There was some discussion about positions traditionally held by females and positions that I'd call traditionally held by males and how even though they scored similar points, historically they'd have some different pay. So I think we've addressed some of those equity things through this, through what I consider more standardized. It's, you know, the paying compensation strategy is evolving, so things that used to be done as separate studies now are more built into the structure, right? You're trying to get that fairness and equity throughout, but I, I would not suggest that we've done a specific, what I understand, Councilmember Miller, what you're, what you're speaking of, I don't believe we've completed, at least not in the time that I've been here.
Okay, anybody else have anything on this? Okay, we have a first and a second to override the veto. Kristy, can we have a roll call on this, please?
Yes. Start with Alda Person OD.
No.
Tony.
Yes.
Horsette.
No.
Miller.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Bierstedt.
No.
Bjork.
I'll have to say no, I wasn't here during the time, so it'd be abstained, which is a no.
Just for clarification, Mr. Bjork, it won't matter for the results, as I understand it, Mr. Gerhart, but do you wish to be recorded as an abstention or a no?
Abstention.
And the results don't change, it would have required a two-thirds vote, which is five members of the council.
Okay, next we have some announcements. First one is a Police Appreciation Week proclamation. All right. Mayors asked me to read this. Whereas police officers of River Falls have worked devotedly and unselfishly on behalf of the people of this community, regardless of peril or hazard to themselves, these officers have safeguarded the lives and property of all in River Falls. And by their service and their dedication, dedicated efforts, these men and women have earned the gratitude of the city of River Falls. And whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy was authorized by Congress to proclaim, to proclaim May fifteenth of each year as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all peace officers who've been killed or disabled in the line of duty. And whereas the presidential proclamation also designates that each year, each year the calendar week in which May fifteenth occurs or proceeding shall be proclaimed as Police Appreciation Week in recognition of the service, service given by the men and women who day and night stand guard in our communities and proclaim May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Now therefore, Dan Tollin, Mayor of the City of River Falls, does hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth through the twenty-first, twenty-twenty, as Police Appreciation Week in the City of River Falls and encourages all citizens to observe the week with law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to this, to their communities and proclaim May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, given under his hand and seal the City of River Falls this twenty-sixth day of April twenty-twenty-two. Thank you. Okay, our next proclamation is for Professional Municipal Clerks Appreciation Week.
And I have the, I have the privilege of reading that. It is May first through seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Whereas the time-honored role that professional municipal clerks display in local governments throughout the world is the oldest profession among public servants and ensures transparency and communication between the citizens, the governing bodies and agencies at the local county and state levels. And whereas the duties of the professional municipal clerks are vital, including serving as the official record keeper, issuing licenses and permits, facilitating the annual board of review, municipal redistricting project, attending meetings and serving as a community resource. And whereas the one thousand eight hundred and fifty-four municipal clerks contribute to election administration by attending required training and dedicating themselves to providing fair, non-biased, non-partisan, accurate and responsible elections in Wisconsin. Now therefore, Mayor Dan Tollin does hereby recognize the week of May first through seventh, twenty-twenty-two as Professional Municipal Clerks Appreciation Week and further extends appreciation to our staff for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, given under his hand and seal of the City of River Falls this twenty-sixth day of April.
Thank you. And last but not least, we have an Arbor Day proclamation.
Well, I might be least, but whereas trees are a vital resource in the city of River Falls across Wisconsin, the nation and the world, and whereas trees help to conserve soil and energy, filter out air and intercept stormwater runoff from entering our waterways, combine, combat climate change, create jobs, provide wildlife habitat and make our homes, cities and countryside more livable and beautiful, and whereas human activities along with the acts of nature threaten our trees, creating the need for concerted action to ensure the future of our rural and urban forests. And whereas each year in late April, Arbor Day is celebrated as people across the country pay special attention to the wonderful treasures our trees represent and dedicate themselves to the continued health of our forests. Now therefore, be it resolved that Dan Tollin, Mayor of the City of River Falls, do hereby proclaim April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two to be Arbor Day in the City of River Falls. Be it further resolved that the mayor urges all citizens to become more aware of the importance of trees to their well-being and to participate in tree planting programs that will ensure a healthy and green city and inheritance for future generations in River Falls, given under his hand and the seal of the City of River Falls this twenty-sixth day of April two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment about Arbor Day.
Yep.
I just wanted to thank the council today for, you know, the healthy conversation about we had and I remember how the mayor talked about how we could use some of these funds if we don't use them this way for our ash trees and I also very much appreciate that, us being a tree city. So let's, if we, if we do that, then let's try to honor that, if that's the case. So thanks, everybody, again, for the healthy discussion today. Thank you, Mayor.
Move to adjourn. All in favor of adjourning? Aye. Closed. Okay, we are adjourned.